Before we get started, we want you to know that we're actually being streamed over the internet. This is going to be a live broadcast of this city council meeting tonight. And we can thank Van and Scott Gravely for that. So if you want to go out and call your friends and tell them to tune in on the internet, you can actually see yourself live. Van, would you please stand? Van Gravely, how do we get on the internet to actually see the ...?
Go to fedcounty.biz. And then on the left-hand side at the top, it says TV, Fayette County TV.
Very good. That's amazing, I'll tell you.
And these are also held so that you don't just need to, or just have to watch them live, but you can also go back and watch one later on.
Right. And then we have both television stations here also that will re-broadcast our council meetings. We want to welcome everyone to our city council meeting. And we've got several guests with us tonight. We're delighted to have our guests here. We're introducing our guests. And we begin our council meetings, we open up with prayer. And I want you to remember our police chief Danny Jenkins. He had a stent put in, but after he had the stent put in, he's got a kidney stone attached. And so he is at home resting, trying to pass that kidney stone. And then council lady Ann Hamner is absent tonight. She had eye surgery today. And I talked to her this afternoon. She's doing very good. Eye surgery went well, so she will not be with us today. I'm going to ask our city attorney Dale Larson. Dale, will you open us up to prayer and let's remember those who are sick?
Yes.
And God bless our meeting.
May we pray. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this day and thank you for all that you've given us. Just be with the council tonight and the mayor as they seek to make decisions for our city. Just give them the wisdom and discernment to keep them within your will and purpose for our city and for our community. We lift up a special prayer tonight for Chief Jenkins and for Council Lady Hamner. We just hope that you'll place your hand upon them and heal them and be with them during this, particularly Chief Jenkins during his time of sickness. Ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay, let's please stand. We're going to have our pledge to the flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's call our meeting to order. And first thing we'd like to do, council, is approve our minutes. And then I'm going to start introducing some very special people here. You have the minutes from the March 27th regular council meeting and you also have the minutes from the work session. I have a motion to adopt the minutes. The motion is our second. Is there a second? I have a motion and second. Any discussion, any additions, deletions, corrections to the minutes? All those in favor of adopting our minutes, say aye. Opposed, nay. Thank you, council. Okay. I can't tell you how important our school system is. And we have three educators with us here tonight. We have three principals. And I want to thank you for being here. We make a yearly donation. The city council approves in our budget, we make a donation back to our schools, Fayette Middle School, Fayette Elementary School, and Fayette High School. It's a $5,000 donation that they can use and I'm going to tell you, they need it. Their budgets are real tight this year and they're getting tighter. But I can't thank you educators enough. Sarah Newton, principal at Fayette Elementary School. And Ron Hannah, principal at Fayette Middle School. And Jeremy Madden, principal at Fayette County High School. They're all three here. And we just want to tell you, the city council and the mayor wants to tell you how much we appreciate the good job you do with our school children. And to express our appreciation to you, we'd like you to come forward because we're going to present this donation to you tonight. And we'd like to have a picture made with you. So if you'll come forward, council, if you'll come down here. And city council, come down here. Hey, we're doing it right. We've got the check. All three principals hold the check there. And I want the council to come down, stand beside them. This is $5,000 per school. And we've been able to do this for the last few years. Three of us get behind them there. And you need to get, if you want me to get some folks out of the way, you can get a picture here.
You need to stand on Don's lap.
All right, everybody smile.
Is this camera in the way over there?
Is Brandon's camera in the way?
Yeah, a little bit. Let me get this way a little bit too.
First, make sure I didn't shut my eye on this thing. All right, thank you. And what we'd like to do, what we'd like to do ... And if y'all would like to say anything, you're welcome. You're not required to say anything.
Well, I'll just say something.
Simple, clear. And let's, we really appreciate you here. Keep up the good work. Some strong leaders there.
On behalf of the 600 students at Fayette County High School, I want to thank you. Our enrollment is up this year. We can't really figure out why, but we have enrolled about 26 to 28 new students. So we're real pleased about that. And you know, education precedes prosperity. And it's just so nice to live in a community where education is valued by our city leaders. And just like Ray said, our state budgets have been cut, so this could come at a better time. And I thank you again.
Okay, thank you. And you're not going to be long because I know y'all have a lot on the agenda. However, on behalf of Fayette Middle School, we want to thank the mayor and the council for this generous donation. And of course, everything we do is student-driven. So again, we want to thank you on behalf of the school. Thanks.
I'd like to thank the mayor and the council again on behalf of the students and faculty at Fayette County High School. And I just can't tell you what it means because again, we are cash-strapped and it does help with activities and projects that we're trying to do at the school to help the school and help the students and in turn, help the community. So again, on behalf of those people, I thank you tonight.
Being an old principal, I tell you, this time of the year, we were strapping around trying to sign money for toilet paper. I'm serious now. I mean, I know what it's like. So we're excited that we're able to do that. And so thank you again for coming and being a part of our meeting tonight. Okay, let's go right into our business session here. We do have some special guests. The Fayette Historical Commission, we set this night for a public hearing. And we're going to explain to you what the purpose of the public hearing is. But we have Mary Shale and Leanne Wofford from the Alabama Historical Commission that are here with us tonight. And they have been a big help in getting us established, our historical commission established. And I'm going to ask Mary to come up and just make some comments before we let our consultant present his information to the city council. And Ben Hightower, would you please stand while Mary's coming up here? He's the chairman of our commission. We also have Morris Ann Perry, a board member, please stand. Eddie Campbell is a board member. Dennis, Dale Larson, would you please stand? Dale, would you please? But now Dennis Fisher, Jim Berry, and Anne Phillips are the other three board members. But we have four of the seven board members here. And that should go back to McCullough and Don. We are, but please come forward now. And I wanted Mary to make some comments about, you know, why we're doing this, why this is important to our community.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm pleased to be here. Leanne and I drive around the city today and look at the survey information that David will talk about. You've got a beautiful city and lots of great historic buildings. The project to date has focused on your commercial downtown. Years ago, I think in the early 80s, late 70s, you'd had a part of your downtown listed on the National Register. But since that time, the city created the Preservation Commission that then these other folks are members of. And that group, when they were established, allowed the city to become a certified local government that is one of the federal programs my agency manages. Having that status allows the city to come to us and get grants to do different projects related to historic preservation through the work of that commission. So they have received grants in the past from us to do training and also do this survey. And the consultant went around and documented all the commercial buildings in your community and also started looking at your residential area because you've got some wonderful historic residential buildings as well. The downtown survey, now that we have that, he can show you maps where he has shown the potential National Register district that can be nominated for the city of Fayette to have a larger downtown historic district. This National Register listing is just an honorary designation. It does provide some benefits. There's a property tax reduction for commercial property to be assessed at a residential rate. There's also a 20% tax credit that can be provided for rehabilitation of those properties if you follow some specific federal requirements. And having this National Register district will also help your commission in the future with any kind of local designation and protections that the city may want to place on that area to make sure the historic character of those buildings is protected as new businesses come in and people want to modify the buildings. This Preservation Commission can make sure those changes are appropriate and you keep that National Register listing. The city was granted an award for this current fiscal year, a grant award from our office to take that survey the next little few steps to be a National Register district. Your great half-time or in Haiti, Dwayne, has been a great assistant to get this grant application in. I hope he's going to be back soon. I know y'all all are, but we've been able to work with him and y'all will need to get personnel to do the National Register nomination. The future projects, once you get this downtown listed, are really up to your Preservation Commission and your city council. This district can be designated and regulated. I'm sure you're familiar with Tuscaloosa. They did that with some of their neighborhoods. That's another process that the city would need to go through. A lot of people are concerned when things are listed on the National Register that they're automatically regulated by some group, but that is not true. The Preservation Commission here in Fayette will have to work with the property owners and the city council if they want to take it to that level. Another project I'd like to see the city do in the future, once they get their downtown established, is to look at your residential areas. And we'll have grant money in the future for the city to do that. We'll get a bargain. We only require 20% match from the city for the survey and registration project. But the city also receives money for training to send your members to different workshops. There are 29 certified local governments and Fayette is on the top when it comes to training. They come to the workshops that we do around the state and they really take that seriously. And I appreciate the city council's support for them to do that. But I hope that another project should be looking at your neighborhoods and getting them listed. The financial benefits aren't as numerous, but it does help build some respect and people feel honored to have that listing. So it's a way to just kind of put in their mind that this is an important area, important houses. So when they do make changes, hopefully they'll do things appropriately so y'all can keep that beautiful character you have. Are there any questions that I could answer?
Council, have any questions? When I mentioned our historic cemetery, Ann, she wanted to know more about it and we shared some information with her and I don't know if there's any opportunities there.
That would be a great project for your commission to work on. Leanne and I have gone and looked at your cemetery both times we've been here. It's beautiful. You have a lot of crosses that were put on Confederate graves that were designated by the sons or the daughters, the sons. Those are very rare. Those are stolen often out of cemeteries. So you've got some really unique features in there, from your markers to these little metal markers that are attached. There was a daughter of the American Revolution, little metal marker at one. I've never seen one before. As we walk around, we see a lot of the monuments have tumbled over. I don't know if it's just been some natural event or if the lawnmowers, when they're cutting, are knocking into those faces and causing that to happen. But some can easily be fixed just putting them back together. Others have been broken and might need some more work. But the Preservation Commission, working with the monument companies, does the city provide the maintenance there?
Yes, we do.
But they can maybe get a committee together to start looking at ways to improve some of the markers and get them a better shape because you've got some just really great features up there as well. And I would think going in and Leanne's program, the Cemetery Register, making sure all that information is documented and then our program would be another kind of volunteer effort. I'm sure the commission could probably find partners because cemeteries are just very popular with genealogists, preservationists, historians. You can usually find a lot of people to help out on those projects.
Can you help us form a cemetery association?
Leanne can do that.
That's something that we really need. And so we need your expertise on that. If you could help us with that, we'd greatly appreciate it.
We can work with Ben as the lead on that.
Okay, very good. Thank you for having us.
We're going to leave now.
Thank you for being a part of our meeting tonight. We're going to turn, we're going to open the public hearing up to David Schneider. Did I get that right?
Snyder.
Yes, Snyder.
I'll take you on a copy of this.
David is our consultant. He was hired through the grant that we received from the Alabama Historical Commission and also the Department of the Interior is where that money comes from. So David, full of yours.
Yeah, I'll be relatively brief. Mary did a good job of explaining the why. I'll explain a little bit about the Washington and kind of what I'm here for tonight. Basically, just a little bit about me. I'm a historic preservation consultant based out of Anniston. My company name is Schneider Historic Preservation LLC. I've been doing this now for, gosh, 31 years this summer. So I'm almost historic in my own right. So I've been doing a lot of this. Before I get into the sort of the meat of what I'm going to talk about all briefly, I want to say how much fun it's been to work in Fayette. You've got a great city and from a standpoint of historic building, it's really wonderful. You should be very proud of what you've been able to keep here. Really wonderful character downtown, especially in some of the residential neighborhood. It's been a lot of fun for me, somebody that works all over the state, really all over the southeast, to kind of work in Fayette for the last couple of months. Basically, we did the bulk of the fieldwork here this spring in what the field was prior to actually getting started. I did some historical research and wrote a little background study about Fayette and its history to get an idea of what kind of buildings I might encounter when I came out in the field. And then spent a couple of days out here basically photographing and taking down information about every building within the survey area that we identified, which basically you all have a copy of the map. It goes down to the railroad right away on the south, Second Avenue northeast on the east, Fourth Way on the north, and then the west side of the Second Avenue on the west. That is the primary survey area, which basically takes in the commercial area down to the south end of that and then residential area that goes all the way up pretty much to the community center of the old school. And that's the kind of the northern boundary to get an idea of where we survey. When we were here for the kickoff meeting back in, what, November? I forget exactly when we were here last. We talked about, at road round with Mary and Leanne, we talked about actually also surveying a small area along Columbus Street, this really nice residential neighborhood and street along there. So we added that into the project as well. Basically, what we did for every property we surveyed, I took one or more digital photographs of it, pulled out a survey form, which is a whole stack of them over there. We ended up surveying 217 individual resources as part of the survey. So each resource was recorded on a map, recorded on a survey form, and then we have photographs of them. Photographs would be really useful for the commission as they move forward because in most cases, the beauty of digital photography now, instead of just taking one grainy black and white picture that only could sit in one file, we now have digital pictures and usually several each site, so you actually get a pretty good idea of how the building looks. Definitely one of the police require. It's okay. Anyway, so we have a lot better coverage photographed than we used to have, plus we have a lot of street skate views, so it's a lot easier for people to kind of process what they have. So what you really have is a good snapshot of, you know, what the historic resources in the survey area are as of, you know, March or April of 2012. As Mary said, this is the basis of, that's thunder. It's a good basis for any other types of, you know, preservation planning or National Register, whatever you may decide to do next. This is the background information you need to have and it's pretty much at this point complete. And the only other, sort of two purposes tonight. One was just to sort of inform city council as to what we've been up to and what you've been spending your money on over this project. But also just as part of the public forum on it, to let people know it's out there and give people an opportunity over the next couple of weeks, if you have an opportunity to look at the survey or if you have a historic house in that survey or you know something about the history of it, you know, let us know and we'll add it into the survey before we end up sending out the final product here hopefully in another 30 days or so. So that's primarily what I'm here for. So I'll just turn it over and see if anybody has any questions at this point.
We do have two buildings on the Alabama Historical Report.
Right.
I know that the old post office here, we applied and the age of this building was built in 1946 and qualified for us to have it on the Alabama Historical Report. And then what about the court?
Well, there's two, there's actually, you have two listings on the Alabama Register and you have two listings on the National Register. The National Register is the courthouse district, which is a small district including the courthouse and the building sort of immediately surrounding. And that was listed on the National Register in 1976. It also was on the Alabama Register, I think, a year earlier. So that district has been around for a long time. On the National Register, you also have the Edward Rose House that was listed in 1995. And on the Alabama Register, we have the post office here. Basically, the Alabama Register and the National Register are sort of similar programs when one's administered by the Alabama Historical Commission and one's in this by the National Park Service. It was a similar intent, but differently.
No advantages to Alabama.
No advantages to that. Oh, yes, it is. The cachet of knowing that the state of Alabama makes your historic resources. But beyond that, no, this is purely.
Yeah, I misquoted that. This building was built in 1936.
36, I was going to say.
Corrected, I appreciate that.
I was about to flip through and I figured, I figured somebody would catch it.
Now, here's the question. What will it take for this historic building here that is now our city hall to be on the National Historic Report? Is there an opportunity?
Well, actually, what will end up happening, the most logical thing is if you move forward with the National Register District for the downtown area, if I'm not mistaken, yeah, the city hall building would be in that district and would be listed on the National Register as part of that district. That's the simplest, easiest way. If for some reason y'all decided not to move forward with that district, you can conceivably come back and do it individually. But it's, the National Register Program and Park Service, they prefer to review one big district rather than, you know, one building here, one building there. Once it's actually listed as part of the district, it's on the register, so it doesn't even be in the district. So once you get that district, it's the same effect here can be either way.
What about the old train depot?
It would be in the district as well.
Okay, yes.
It's not listed on any currently, but it would.
Well, this building is 75-plus years old.
So 25 years, they ought to be ready to put it on anybody.
Somebody will get to celebrate that 25.
Well, I mean, the train station obviously is the reason why the town is where it is. The current town is where it is. So obviously, it's a pretty important landmark for it. But again, between that and this building, you have a wonderful downtown commercial area, which again, not as many towns in Alabama have been as successful as keeping them intact and all that. And so it's a great downtown.
Thank you, sir. All right, any comments or questions? Public hearing, we're going to get this in the paper and make sure that the public knows if they can, the survey will be here available for them to come in. Now, you have every building when it was built, right?
Yeah, generally speaking, we did historical research and the vast majority of the buildings, there's not a lot of site-specific information on it. You might get lucky on some things like after the fire, you know, a lot of buildings we could date pretty accurately when they were built, the train station, we know. A lot of the houses, it's purely an estimate based on, you know, my knowledge of historic buildings. So people may have better information about an exact date of construction or who might
It does curve right there, but it remains Fifth Street all the way through.
We will correct that.
All right.
The purpose of the boundaries, that's probably more.
Well, it's important just to make sure the map accurate too. And make sure if we have any resources on it, we have them accurate and cited.
Or is there any other comments, questions, so?
Mayor, when you put the article in the paper, you can include that map so people would know if they're building a survey.
Okay.
And you're going to have those at city hall for people to come look at.
Yeah, and preferably, if you want to provide information, or how they can get the information to me, utilize my email address for a further.
Two hundred and seventeen properties.
Yeah.
That you surveyed.
Correct.
And that covered a hundred and more.
Roughly a hundred and three, assuming my computer mapping is correct, about a hundred acres.
Okay. All right, very good. You did an excellent job.
Well, thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
And we're looking forward to continuing to work with you. And Mary, did I understand, I thought I heard you say that we had been awarded that grant? We applied for the grant.
Right, you're applying for an F112 grant. And I probably notified Wayne, maybe he hasn't gotten it.
Okay, so, you're saying that we did, we were awarded the two grants?
You've been awarded four thousand to take the survey and nominate it downtown to the National Register. And you've been awarded two thousand for training. And that can be used from, hopefully, we'll have the grant agreement to use by June. And that money can be spent from being through August of fourteen, I mean, probably thirteen.
Okay. Very good. And thank, when you approved that application, let me remind everyone again, there's no cash match on that. It's in-time match. And Mr. Roper will be doing an in-time match on that.
Yes, we'll be counted and filled in.
Right, okay, very good. And thank you for being here, thank you. Good job, Bailey.
We are telling them we're going to.
Yes, yes. Thank you a lot. We'll take, thank you, get some more work with you and give you some feedback from the information.
If anybody has any questions or comments, you can contact us, we're available anytime.
All right. Thank you. I would like to, we do have another special guest in the back, and that's the chairman of our Economic Development Advisory Board, John James. John James is back there, and we want to invite you, John and I want to invite you to a seven o'clock meeting in the morning, council. That's in the morning, all right, John? We'll be having our meeting at seven o'clock in the morning, you're all invited. Anne Hamner has always been faithful about coming to that meeting and being a part of that, but. Here at the council chamber, at seven o'clock in the morning. John, thank you for being here. Thank you for what you do for our community.
Thank you.
All right, let's go with item number three. Tonight, we also have a public hearing on our CDVG grant. And we have our consultant, Terry Acuff. And Terry, if you'll come forward and conduct the public hearing.
What we're here to do tonight is that, you know, we talked about during your last council meeting the possibility of you applying for a Community Development Block Grant. You decided that was something you wanted to proceed, try and particularly to do. So, what we have to do before you take any action or move forward with doing any CDVG application, you have to have a public hearing to where I explain to you what the Community Development Block Grant Program is, what it can be used for, and answer any questions to the public. And so, we're briefly discussed what we're thinking of doing. And then, at your next council meeting or the following, you'll take action to submit a CDVG application. But basically, the Community Development Block Grant Program is a program that is funded through HUD. They basically take X amount of dollars every year, and then they distribute it to the states, to the town for less than twenty-five thousand population, they put it in pool. And you, as a large city, are eligible to apply. They have twenty million dollars this year that they're going to pass out or award to participating communities. They break that twenty million dollars down into four million dollars in economic development. Roughly five and a half for large cities, which you are, a town of thirty thousand people. They do five thousand for small cities, and they do somewhere around three million for counties. And then, they have a planning fund, and then they have a community enhancement fund, about four million dollars. What you had wanted to talk about was a sewer project. Any money of these monies have been spent in an area that's fifty-one percent low in moderate income. What that means is HUD sets limits for a family of four in this area of low and moderate income, probably thirty-six thousand dollars a year. So, if you fall under that and have residents in those neighborhoods qualify, we can apply for these monies. Your grant application is due May fifteenth, it's the council electrical block. You've done several of these, you've done your downtown revitalization, you've done several sewer projects, you've done the Christians Center Concerned, you've done a lot of different type CDVG programs, and we target areas that are low and moderate income. The city of Fayette as a whole is not low and moderate income, but we target areas and limits on the glide in downtown. So, that's how you get these monies. So, with that, I'll answer any questions. The project you're thinking about applying for is sewer. What we're looking at is the Fourth Street and Fifth Street area to where you've had, you've got some issues with your sewer system there. You've got larger lines flowing into two lines converging onto one smaller line that caused you problems with backups. We did our income survey, you qualify based on the input we have here. Hopefully, at your next council meeting of the following, we'll be here to discuss dollar amounts and y'all passing a resolution authorizing the merit of a block. But with that, I'll answer any questions anybody has about Community Development Block Grants.
Okay. What was your original estimated cost of applying that sewer?
Just to do Fifth Street to start up at the state highway. Board of the state highway started that manhole leading all the way down to your alcohol line. It's seven hundred and ninety-four thousand three hundred dollars. If you encompass both streets, it winds up being one point two. Sewer is not a cheap endeavor, as you would.
When you say both streets, are you talking about they're running back up the highway toward?
Yes, they're going back up the highway.
Or ten streets?
Yes, they're going back up the highway and then going over and getting Fourth and Fifth, those two lines all the way down, getting that over there. To do that, that's about one point two.
We need to do it all.
Well, Terry's going, we're going to be in a work session here in a little bit, and he's going to show us an opportunity we're going to have to. So, is any other comments? Terry, thank you for the good job you do for the city.
No problem.
Thank you.
The public hearing is officially over.
Yes, sir.
Right, okay, thank you. Item number four, bond update. I'd like to read the case, Ms. Clapp. And by the way, you have in your, you'll find in your packet there, there's a document there. It says draft on the city of Fayette. When all that information is finalized, which we anticipate that to be by no later than on Monday of next week, that'll be the presentation that will present our standard and force people so on.
I think we announced two weeks ago that we were ninety percent complete. I think now we're ninety-nine percent complete. We're basically waiting on one document, one piece of documentation from the probate office, and they're supposed to have that in the morning, and we'll send down emergency capital. And that's what, in your package, this is what we've been working on. This is the presentation package that would give S and P for them to do their credit rating on us. I've had one piece of information they're going to get in the morning, we'll complete this package. Okay, now, the timeframe here is they'll get that in the morning, plug all the numbers in, email us a copy, hopefully tomorrow, no later than Friday. Then, we'll have a final proof and make sure everything's as we've talked about. And then, hopefully, Friday, after they get our changes or whatever, they will email this to S and P on Friday or Monday. Okay? We're anticipating within a week of that date, hopefully by next Friday, we're going to have our conference call. And that's when we sit down with the city of Fayette, the emergency caper bond people, as well as S and P credit analysts, as well as our bond council, to go over this package. Where they're going to look at our numbers. After that, within a week timeframe, we should get our credit rating. Now, assuming that comes in as we anticipate as an A or A-plus better, they should start selling bonds that day. And the bond people said, since this should be an A-rated bond, we should sell our bonds in a couple of days. These big institutional investors buy these type of bonds, so it should go pretty quick. So, timeframe, we're looking for a two, possibly a three-week timeframe. Have the bond issue complete and the bond sold. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
I have a comment. I read through the packet. I'm not a accountant or economist, but the picture, the way the city of Fayette is portrayed economically, the status of our government is very, very silent. We have positives in every aspect where we have positives and, you know, we're good. We have come a long way in the last few years and recovered very well. And the financial stability of our city of Fayette government is very strong. It's impressive, we've done.
I encourage you to take a look at this package, but it is a very, mission to a good about the city of Fayette. It's been a, you know, come a long way, and it's a very nice presentation. So, I encourage you to take a look at it.
And we'll, when we do get the final draft, we'll email that to each council, so you'll have a copy of it.
Yeah, yeah, we both.
Somebody's feeding. Thank you, Rick. Ms. Clapp, you have any comments? I know that they have put a lot of effort in getting information to emergency capital for the last week, the two weeks, so a lot of information, so thank you. All right, item number five, police department report. Chief Jenkins is not going to be with us, but we have our assistant chief, John Underwood, that's going to come. You do have two reports, the February report and the March report, council. Go ahead, John.
I'm going to give you the February report first. Our rec investigation was twelve, our incident and offense, the report was thirty-two. Our initial case was one seventy-three. District court was five. Our total cases for February was one seventy-eight. About half that.
All right, chief, that's five eight, talking about five eight.
Our report for March is on. Our rec investigation was eight, incident and offense report was forty-four. Initial cases was one twenty-eight. District court was three. Our total cases for March was one thirty-one.
Okay, council, you have the report. Any questions, assistant chief? Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's get our fire department report. Chief Ellis. Chief, were you diagnosed with re-acid reflux?
Basically, yeah.
Worried about it, it was in your heart, but it's acid.
I appreciate that. Some people were at times, but it wound up being that, so I'm proud of it. Good, that's better.
We're glad you're here.
Thank you, that's beer. So, I'll give February, start with February report too, that's the last one. We had a total in February of seven structure calls. We had one fire alarm activation, and two vegetation fires. We had three hazmat calls, eight public assistance calls, resulting in a total of twenty calls for the month of February. In March, we wound up with three structure calls. We had two fire alarm activations, resulted in two false alarms in those. Four vegetation fires, we had six vehicle accidents, one other call, and then we had eight public assistance calls. The total for the month of March was twenty-four calls for the month. Brings us through March for a total of fifty-seven calls here today.
All right. Council, any questions, comments? All right, very good job, chief. Anything else to report?
Yeah, I would like to just report a couple of different things that we got going on in the fire department coming up. What I'd like to do is maybe come to the next council meeting. I'm currently gathering up information on our fire grants that we do every year from FEMA. And I've gotten information that they're going to open that application period up around June. So, I'm putting figures together to present to y'all for what we're going to do on that. I'd like to present that to you the next meeting. We've got some upcoming training, and I'm going to send some guys to. I got three guys going at the end of the month who have hazmat technician. There's a fee wage, books, and tuition at Fire College. I've got three firefighters that are going to go, scheduled to go to it. Myself, I've got three days of training, I'm going to Decatur next week for some live fire training, the trainer training. And then, Thursday, we've got our employee safety meeting, corporate safety meeting planned. But Thursday, Alabama Pilot is going to be conducting that meeting, training at their crew headquarters in Fayette.
At two o'clock?
Yeah, two o'clock.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, chief. Item number seven, today in American production. I do want you to know, council, that Terry Bradshaw will not be in Fayette on April the twenty-fourth. But now, he will host the feature, that Fayette is going to be featured on national television. And I've given you a copy of the final pre-production information and the script, and the interviewees, and that's going to be April the twenty-fourth. And one of the plans, the film crew, I plan to have them here for the council meeting that night to get a shot of the activity here at our council meeting. But they'll be here all day long on April the twenty-fourth, and we're excited about that. And what I'm really excited about, council, I want you to know, ninety percent of the cost was through grant money. We went out and went after grant money, and ninety percent of the cost of this production, I think there's a balance on this clap of about two thousand dollars left. And so, we're excited about that, excited about that day. And we will be on national television twenty times. It will be broadcast, and then we'll have the exclusive rights to use that five-minute segment to market our city and county. Any comments? Council, you have the financial statement before you, if you all had time to review that, do you have a motion to adopt our financial?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a second, all right? Ms. Clapp, would you like to, do you have any comments about the financial?
No, so it's just, it's just a check restribe, these are the bills that we pay and more.
All right, and she's going to report when we approve this, she's going to report on our sales taxes, and we do have a report there. Any more discussion? All those in favor of adopting our financial, say aye. You oppose, say nay. That was pretty weak. All right, now, let's get. Yes, yes. Does the council have, the council have any? How would you like to be on real live television?
Well.
Counsel, Councilman Harden has recommended, and I have no objections to it, council. Part of our work session, Amanda Hamm has presented us a proposal. Yes, come up to the podium here. And her mother, Mary Hamm, is also here, let's get a shot of her. But she's supporting her, this is a Girl Scout project, this is the highest honor that you can receive in the Girl Scouts. And she's been one for many, many years now, and this is the culmination of her scouting. And she is presenting to us a project here for the city park, so. And council, pull out the packet that I put in your packet there, that she has put this packet together. And we're going to ask her to go ahead, if you've got that packet there. It's called Augusta Smith Park Restaurants, okay? The floor is yours.
Okay, my name is Amanda. I have a class.
Tell them where you go, it's good in what grade you're in.
Okay, I'm at Fayette County High School, and I'm a senior this year.
And how long have you been in scouting?
Um, ever since I was a Brownie, so, I know y'all have no idea what that means, but about twelve years.
Okay.
Well, not twelve, yes, about twelve.
All right.
Okay. Um, I proposed to fix the bathrooms that I located between the tennis courts and the playground area. Okay, and the equipment, if you look in your packet at the very back of it. Um, okay, um, and the equipment, if you look in your packet at the very back of it, I have a list of equipment and your male restroom, the stalls are currently three feet and state code says that they're supposed to be four feet, so I want to extend the stalls of the, place a platform underneath one of the urinals, extend, well, not really extend a countertop because there's not a countertop in there, but place a countertop because there's just a sink and by the tennis courts, you have guys who change clothes and stuff, so they're not in place to put their bags and stuff, so add in a countertop. There's a screen above, I mean, a window above the sink and during the summer, the window stays open, but there's not a screen, so the bugs get into the restroom, so I want to place a screen over the window. And there's a, um, there's a ramp going into the door and it's not a state code, I don't have the state requirements, but I want to fix the ramp and then paint the restroom. And then on the women's side, I want to extend the stalls from three feet to four feet, put a countertop in, place a screen over the window, fix the ramp, paint. And then the last stall, I want to take out the commode in the last stall and make like a changing area for tennis players and mothers who are changing their kids and stuff. And then there's a water fountain located outside of the restrooms, it's no longer marking, so I want to fix the water fountain. And then as of right now, the garbage can is located near the water fountain and I, I don't find that sanitary, so I just want to move the garbage can away from the water fountain. And like Dave Nelson said, if I complete this project, I'll get my gold award, which is the highest award I can achieve in cross guns.
All right, Council, I, Council, I have, I have had Ronnie Black, our maintenance supervisor, and also Joey Byers sit down with, with Amanda and her mother and we went through this and they've looked at it and they says, yes, this is doable and it can be done. And I think what you wanted to do, you were going to provide a carpenter to do, to do the installation, you said, plus your family would be helping, other, other Girl Scouts?
Family, family members, Boy Scout Tru-45 has offered to help with like demolition and stuff like that. And just basically family and Tru-45.
And other Girl Scouts?
And other Girl Scouts.
Right, lacking one on right back there.
Yes.
And who have we got back here?
Rose Door, Doc.
All right, glad you're here, glad you're here. I did ask Ronnie to do a cost estimate on materials, if they're going to do all the labor, if they're going to have a carpenter, and Ronnie came back and gave you an estimate of $1,300. That means all the stalls are going to have to be replaced and, and y'all are going to see if y'all could get an estimate also, I don't know if you've done that or not.
We did. It was, it was around the $7,000. It was $1,400.
Okay, all right. So what you're asking the council is permission for you to do this project, to renovate the bathrooms and do all the labor and, and us provide the materials, is the way I understand that. Am I, am I right?
Yes, sir.
Council, you've heard, do you have any questions for Amanda? Any?
I think it's very well planned out and thought out and something that we have needed for a good while.
And I think while they're up there, we need to look at our other restaurants and if this is an opportunity for us to go ahead and do renovations on our other restaurants, we need to do that ourselves, but...
Unless Amanda wants to do a model.
She wants to graduate and finish school and, you want to get started on that, you told me you want to start on this and have it completed before the end of May.
Yes, before I graduate, before I be second.
Right, okay, this week. So if you get approval, when do you think that you'll want to start this project?
If I get approval, after I order all of the wood and get the countertops in, as soon as I get that in, it's, will be when I start to begin my project.
All right, and I think that our maintenance, Ronnie Black will help with that and ordering the materials and we can get it tax-free through the city if we order the materials ourselves.
Okay.
And we just want to make sure that, that we're getting what you need for you to do the renovations, so. Council, what's your pleasure?
I'd make a motion if we grant her.
No, we have a motion, Councilman Harden has a motion and, and Councilman Brand second. Is there any discussion? Any other discussion?
I'd just like to commend her for, for this project, this has been well, well thought out and something that we really need in that area that we need you for doing that.
Thank you. I'm a fellow tennis player on my girls' tennis team, so I use those bathrooms.
And, and they change, you know, they go up there, the high school tennis teams go up there and, and if they, if we have this place here where they can change clothes, I mean, it would really be a convenience for, for them to, so I'm, I'm excited about it. So, we're ready to vote or did we vote? We're, all right, we're ready to vote. All those in favor to grant this project to Amanda Hamm and, and we'll provide the materials and she and the Girl Scouts and her family and who she gets to help, will do all the labor. All those in favor of that, say aye. Aye. The opposed, say nay. That is unanimous, that is unanimous, so thank you and you can go back home and watch this, I'm thinking you can watch it yourself now on television.
Thank you.
Okay, Council, any old business to come forward to city council? Do we have any old business? Let's get right into our reports. Ms. Clapp, do you want to report on our sales taxes? Council, you should have it, I think it was put on there. Sitting out here. Go ahead.
The monies that we collected in March, which were sales tax for February, the net amount was $196,356.88. That was the net amount on the sales tax. Now on the alcohol tax, it was $8,620.45, also the month of March. And I placed a comparison there so you could see what happened in March of last year. And the figures below here, those were just the alatex fees that we had, you know, to put us at the gross amount. But also, I'd like to just remind you, if you have it filed to ethics home, please get that to me so that it's viewable. If it's not, let's get that out there.
And we want to remind you again that qualifying for city elections, municipal elections is July the third and closing of that qualifying is July the 17th and then election day is all, the last Tuesday of August, August 28th?
Twenty-eight.
August 28th. All right, Council lady, for all you want to report on the opening day ceremony or anything else?
We had a huge crowd at the park last Friday night for the opening ceremonies and I think the games all begin this week, so everything just turned out real, real good. It was a huge crowd there. And nothing new, I spoke to the park director today, but nothing new going on.
All right, Councilman Harden?
Our street department is busy with all the living grass and weeds and everything else going on with you, and I talked briefly yesterday and he thinks we need to look at hiring a couple of temporary workers during the summer like we had last year and I told him, you and I and the rest of the council will discuss that probably tonight.
All right, so, Ms. Anne, that's your report. Mayor, Portem, Wilson.
No, I don't have anything.
Councilman Brand. Okay, I do have one thing, we do have a new, up there in front of you here, they had an open house, the Bride of the Path, we have a new business in Fed, the Bride of the Path has just opened up and I wanted you to have that affirmation. That makes about eight new businesses in the past 12, 14 months that have opened up and so if you are getting ready for a wedding, they've got everything that you need to, to have that wedding. All right, and we're going to plan to have a work session here. Is there any other business to come forward to city council?
Mayor, that resolution.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. This was added to the agenda tonight. Mr. Acuff said that we needed to pass this resolution and Dale, will you explain that?
It's, it's a resolution, it just, it's concerning fair housing and it just affirms that the city, it's a policy, the city to implement programs to, to ensure equal opportunity in housing. Council's passed this type of resolution for, I think it's in connection with the CDBG grants.
Okay. All right, Council, you have this resolution concerning fair housing, have a motion to adopt the resolution? Some move. Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a second, is there any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor of adopting this resolution 2012 dash over one, say aye. The opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries, resolution passes, anything else to come forward to city council? Anything else? I know Head Start, they've, they've got a lot of activities going on, this is the, April is the month of the child, so there'll be a lot of activities, preschool activities going on, Head Start activities. Do I have a motion for a German? Motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of German, say aye. All right, we'll take five minutes, Council, so we'll get started.